Hey guys, thank you guys so much for being here today. Today, we're going to be discussing the potential 100-plus properties in the city of Dearborn Heights. We are going to be discussing the proper policy and procedure. We want to make sure that everything goes through ethically. We want to make sure that this is fair to everybody. I know that some of our council members have had some thoughts on this. I know there's a presentation here from Day Board. I know that we have Bidcorp here with us as well. I believe that the president for Bidcorp is also here with us. Several of our community realtors are either on Zoom or be joining or here with us, present. Council members, I do ask to allow the presentations to get by first. If you have any questions, just go to the council chair. I know Councilman Saab has requested to just give a few brief statements before the presentations do begin. He just wants to add a few things on the record. I'm unfamiliar what they are, but he believes that they're urgent. He has them written down. So before doing so, Councilman Saab, you have the floor.
Thank you, Chair.
Thank you, Chair. Thank you, you're welcome.
Mr. Deeb, you were in charge of this bid, correct? No, I'm sorry, you were in charge of the bid?
Hang on, let him come up to the...
I need you up at the podium, please. And then, so the mayor decided not to show off today, correct? Corporation Council, mayor is not showing up today, correct?
I don't speak...
Okay. Well, I requested some very important...
I think, did you consult with him before planning this session?
I did.
Did I?
No, I'm talking to the...
I did. He got in a shouting match with me. It wasn't consulting.
Okay, let's, let's...
For the council chair.
Well, okay, so I have a few questions. I'm gonna go through council chair and they're gonna take a few minutes, but I want, I want these on the record and answered. Number one is that, you know, I had requested emails pertaining to the mayor saying he had some very serious concerns from residents regarding this process and certain members on his body about sales of these property. I have asked the mayor three, four times via email to send those emails over and those residents sent us their information. Claims he sent them to council chair. He did not send everything. And I wanted to question him about these emails and who these people are in these emails. He would not respond or answer my questions. And earlier, we're disrespected by a resident by name-calling and shouting in the hallway. So the mayor will not be here today to answer any questions. My second question is to the mayor or to Corporation Council or Mr. Deeb. On 2/20, the mayor said that there was council, council people gaslighting the process of this process. We only found out about this process when it was submitted to us. Secondly, he sent an email to Director Vanderplow on the 22nd, asking him to investigate us for any wrongdoing. My question to you, Corporation Council, you probably be involved in this. Where's this investigation at?
You know, one thing I don't do is speculate on hearsay, Councilman. What you're saying is you're reading a one-sided document without any kind of input. I have not seen the document you're reading from. And I will not respond to a document where I haven't had a chance to present and litigate with you because that's what it seems like you want to do. I trust and I respect you and I give you all the, all the kudos. But what you have to do is be fair. And if you want to blindside people and bring this up now without any kind of notice, okay. But when you bring something up and you articulate something and you speculate on something without giving the other side a chance to properly respond, that's unfair. So I'm just saying that I'm not responding to it because I don't know what you're talking about. I've not been provided with your documentation. And I don't condone blindsiding.
So, my answer to your question is on Thursday, February 22nd...
Wait, wait, I'm sorry, Councilman, you're speculating on my answer?
No, I said I'm responding to your...
Oh, you're respecting, okay.
Okay, that's fine. On Thursday, February 22nd at 12:01 PM, you were on this email from the mayor. And on that same day, you responded to those emails.
You were asking me to respond to something, 12:01 PM on what day?
On February 22nd.
Okay, well, why didn't you give it to me beforehand? Then I could, listen to me, please. I would have had an opportunity to properly respond to your question in writing if you're gonna bring it up today. This is a study session. But if you want to bring it up in a separate session, we can do that. But I can't, I get about 10 emails sometimes a day from you. I try to respond, sometimes I'm responding three times, four times, saying the same thing over to you. I don't mean, want to be disrespectful and I understand your position. But give us a chance to properly respond. I like responding, I like litigating, I like arguing. Give me a chance.
The thing is, I didn't send you this email, the mayor did.
I, I just, the mayor sent it to me.
Number one, number two, I wish you responded to 10 emails a day, Roger, from the...
You're reading stuff into record.
Guys, come on, let's, let's not make a back-and-forth argument.
So my question is that, since this is back in front of us as a study session and there's investigations going on, where are these investigations? We had a subject matter expert send an email to us regarding this process. Who also, who also I questioned, what are his credentials? Where are his credentials? What's his position in the city? Director Vanderplow. He's, the mayor claims that this subject matter, this was an expert sending this email to us on how the process should be done. Is he a real estate expert? Is he a sales expert? Is he an auction expert? It's nothing we've ever received. One other question is, is that we've, we've asked, the mayor said, you know, we, he's been telling certain people and council members that, remember, we're elected officials, we can go to jail. What is it we're gonna go to jail over? What's he talking about? I mean, he's never, he won't answer, he won't step up to the plate to answer the questions.
Councilor Chair, please, let's not, this is not...
But, 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 no, 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 this is, this is not personal. These are questions that he's not here to answer. This is part of the process.
There's a forum for you to do that, but this is not the forum to attack...
Councilor Chair, I really ask that.
Okay, here, Roger, guys, host, Councilman. Point of order, just point of order, one second. Point of order, one second, host, please, Councilman, one second. I'm gonna agree with Councilman Ahmad on this one. You have three fourths statements that you want to put on the record? I don't want to have it back and forth on what Roger's gonna ask, what you're gonna say, when he's gonna respond. Roger, do me a favor, don't respond, host, read everything that you want to state. It's been put on the record. If Mr. Deeb wants to respond, great. If he doesn't, let's keep the ball rolling. I'm here to discuss about the 100-plus properties that are here that are gonna be ethically sold properly to residents, homeowners, investors in the city of Dearborn Heights. That's all I'm caring about today.
All right, okay, one, one question, Mr. Deeb. Mr. Deeb, was this ever, was this ever advertised locally and given a chance to local vendors to bid out on this?
This was advertised, sir, the same way, every RFP was. Was put on the street for three weeks, starting January 8th to the 29th. And it was advertised the same way every project I advertised.
And what, what ways are those, sir?
Bidnet, website...
What website?
Cities.
Those were not put on the cities website, Mr. Deeb.
This is how we advertise, every, every project that went before you was advertised the same way. It's publicly advertised. That's how we advertise all the projects. So there's nothing unique except for this one project was added. We added an extra week to allow for greater coverage.
Thank you. Are you questions done?
Honestly, I would like to actually, the study session, to reschedule it for another day when the mayor's here. There's questions that I want answered from him personally. He's not here.
Why don't you do this? Why don't you send an email with C.C., me, Roger, the mayor, the council pro, Ahmad, Mr. Deeb? And, and look, ultimately, if the mayor doesn't want to be here, I mean, I'm not gonna hold, we have two different organizations here with us today. I can't cancel the study session with all due respect. What I will tell you is, Mr. Deeb, I think this is something, even when former Councilman Ahmad was here, former Councilman Chairman Abdullah was here. We said many times, if you're gonna put things on RFP, we want to see it on Facebook. We want to see it on Instagram. We want to see it on Snapchat. We want to see it on TikTok. Look, all, all we've always asked is publicly promote these things. I will tell you this. We're looking for cadets right now in the police department. I see it everywhere. Okay. All over Facebook, all over Instagram, all over everything. All I'm saying is moving forward, because really, I didn't know about it either.
Councilor Chair, I'm not in charge of procurement.
I know.
We have a department called procurement department, right? We send this stuff to them. I do the technical, I come up with an RFP, I put the dates, I put the technical part. I don't do the advertising. But we do have, if, if this is a policy you want going forward, please, ask our procurement department to make it a policy for everything.
Maybe we roll down the line, please.
Thank you so much, Mr. Deeb.
Sure. Again, I don't want to do the back-and-forth bickering. I know Councilman Ahmad, you have few things you want to add.
I just want to ask Mr. Deeb, you know, my Councilor Chair, Mr. Deeb, so when you did the bid, how many people responded? Three.
Yeah, all three were sent to us.
Were sent to us?
Yeah. We only received one contract, I love you, but all three...
Three. So, so our procurement staff, just so, you know, we're all on the same level. What they do is, we, I stay away from the process because I don't want any improprieties. So they go back and forth, they ask questions. If the questions are technical, they're referred to in the RFP itself. For technical questions, ask the, the, me. But for any other procedural, they go through the procurement. When, when the bids are all submitted on a due date, they come up with a tally sheet, the same tally sheet that's sent to you for approval. But I go through them and then we go through to make sure that the low, the low bidder is lowest qualified. So if the bid is missing surety bond or missing something, or if they're taking exception, sometimes vendors take exceptions to our policies. And, you know, we don't agree with one, one, one. So we go through them. But in this case, the low bidder, everybody accepted our policy, standard policy, contract, and evaluated. And they came to, it was submitted to us in the format that you see. Low bidder, first, second, third. Reviewed it, went through all the bids in details to make sure they're qualified. And then submitted to the council for approval.
Thank you. I just want to make it clear to everybody why we're having the study session on this. This is a conversation, I think, that many of us have been wanting to have. It's a sensitive topic. I have, you know, received this bid that came into, it came to all the council members. And, you know, sadly, we didn't hear about this until it was sent to us for approval. And, but we also need to keep in mind and understand our roles that we are not the administration. The administration will bring something forward. You need to re-approve or we deny. But there's 100 property plus, 100-plus properties here. And so all we're saying is that we want it to be done ethically, correctly. I know we have a, a great relationship with Day Board in our community. I know Councilman Ahmad has told me, you know, the great people that are on this board, and I know many of them. And look, this is the community that everybody knows everyone, right? So before anybody tries to, you know, pull, pull, pull those words out like nepotism or, or somebody's trying to cherry pick, because I received an email from somebody that said, certain council members who are realtors or loan officers or home inspectors may try to cherry pick the good properties and nobody gets anything. Well, let me make something very clear to you guys. We swore an oath. And I don't think anybody here, especially, because one of them was, you know, named by Councilman Ahmad because he's a realtor, especially Councilman Ahmad would not do such a thing. And if there's anything that you guys know or anybody at home that are watching, Councilman Ahmad is probably the most ethical person in the city of Dearborn Heights. And I mean that. He is probably the most ethical person in the city of Dearborn Heights. And I, and I can attest to the great things that he has done. So for any of those rumors that are going around or anybody that's trolling the council members and saying, send an email to the council members or, hey, send this, or show up to the council meeting and question this. Or anybody says that we're trying to juice them or, you know, they're trying to make some kickbacks. None of that is true. It's all a lie. At least I can tell you right now, I've heard none of that. I know, I know that we have great people in the community. And I hear Bidcorp is a great company as well. We just want to make sure that, one, we're looking out for the best interest of the community. The city is getting the best interest. And, you know, now we're gonna allow Day Board to go ahead and give their presentation.
Can we, can we hear from the bidding company first, maybe, just?
Okay, or if you, or, I know you've requested to be here. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. You can hear me fine?
Yeah.
Excellent. Yeah, I'm with Bidcorp. We are a Michigan-based company. We do government auctions. And we've been in business for 24 years. Our headquarters is in Detroit. We're a minority-owned and woman-owned company. We put a bid in on this project. We saw it on Bidnet, you know, for the RFP. And I wanted to just kind of go over this. Everyone seems to be really hung on the land and the real estate. This RFP, the scope of work was for real estate, police seized vehicles, other assets. And I have to come down here and inventory and photograph everything going to auction. The winning bidder has to have a Michigan Class D license, dealer license, so we can process title work for you. So this is much more than just land, right? So that's why we bid on this, because we can do both real estate and we can do all the other public surplus that you need. So, I know a couple of questions last time had to do with our fees of 8%. And typically, what our base fee is, is 5% for Bidcorp. That's for all auctions. And that's if you do it yourself. We have other contracts with other cities where we come in and handle their surplus and we charge them 15%.
What cities are those, do you mind me asking?
We, we're contracted through some agencies in Detroit. The police department and some other places. I can't really say all of them. So, but those are hands-on, full-service contracts at 15%. But our base fee's five. So I brought, real quick, you know, just so you know about bidders' premiums. Auction websites that, that are for municipalities, most every one of them charge a bidder premium. Because if you sell an item for a thousand bucks, we want to make sure you guys get the thousand. And the bidder pays our fee. And gov deals charges seven and a half percent, public surplus, eight to 12%. Bid for assets, seven to 10%. And munici bid is 9%. So we are by far the lowest cost provider for government surplus auctions. And specifically for here, we wanted to bid 8% to be hands-on to do all your non-real estate assets and come down and help you get everything online. And for real estate, we were gonna charge our 5% Bidcorp fee and then 3% for the Keller Williams real estate broker fee. So the real estate broker fee's 3%, 5% for the auction services.
Eight total percent. Eight total percent, but 5% goes toward...
Bidcorp, that's, that's our auction fee, yeah.
So the 5% comes from us or comes from the bidder?
No, all the costs get passed onto the bidder.
Just not from the city. And you mentioned Keller Williams, you mentioned one company, how come?
Well, I'm affiliated with Keller Williams. I've had my license there for a little over 20 years. And the other gentleman that's the owner of the company, he is on, he has his license affiliated with Keller Williams. We have them there for situations like this.
Which Keller Williams, if you don't mind me asking?
It is David Botzferds on Farmington, Farmington Hills or West Bloomfield. I'm not sure what that...
You said the 3%, so the 3% goes to who?
Well, that would, that would be paid to myself and the other gentleman who's the agent to be doing all the work as the agent, holding the open houses and everything else. So, and it would go through the Keller Williams broker.
Okay, my next question is, so there's a 3%, so there's 5% that goes to Bidcorp, which you, you're an entity of, you own or as a minority group owner of Bidcorp. I believe you said the president is on there as well.
Yes.
So that 5% will be paid with the bidder, will go there. 3% goes to you and the broker, however you guys structured your deal.
For us being the real estate agents involved.
Yeah, for being the real estate agent. What about the buyer that brings you this deal? Are they gonna get anything on this?
There is none because it's an auction. You put it in the MLS under terms as auction and then you provide auction instructions. And, you know, they're, they're, they're on the MLS that way.
My, my next question to you is, I was, when I was reading to the contract, if that's okay, Councilman, if you were done. I believe there was any type of marketing that the city would be held responsible for all the marketing done by Bidcorp and regarding all these properties. I'm hearing seized vehicles from the police department. I had no idea. By the way, I want to make also very clear, because the rumor was, we have a list of things. We have no idea what homes, what's for sale. Like, Bidcorp is telling me now that, that there's prop, there's vehicles also.
Yeah, it's page seven of your RFP. It's, it's the scope of work. Yeah, you wanted us to do everything, not just, not just property. Yeah.
We get the contract, I don't even get the scope of work then. When it's submitted to us, we don't receive what the scope of work was.
Yeah, it requires the winning bidder to have a Class D license to be able to do title work and process vehicles and all that kind of stuff. Yep, yep.
That's great.
So, yeah.
For the marketing now, you said that the...
That's us. No, we're, we do all the marketing.
Yeah, but the, the cost of the marketing falls on the cities according to your contract?
It shouldn't, no. I could, if you, do you...
I don't have it in front of me, but I can tell you, I'm more than certain that's what your contract states.
Well, I, if, if it's in there that way, that is definitely a typo because we never charge our clients anything for any marketing whatsoever.
Yeah.
And if you look, if in the Gantt charts, you'll see all the marketing we do. It's all very well detailed into all the different avenues we do. We do our own press releases, everything like that. So you would have no cost.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Councilor Chair, just one question.
Yeah, go ahead.
But since they're doing seized vehicles and everything, why is the engineering department handling everything? If it's a completely different department. So, before, yeah, I'm just trying to carry you.
Do you want to see the scope of work?
Yes.
So, hand it just to the clerk, please.
So the title, the title of the RFP itself, if you'd look at it, it's a request for bid for city-owned auction services. So this is for all city-owned properties, not just real estate. The auction services is on auction services. We do not have, we wanted to bid anything. You, you confiscate a bike, you confiscate a car. You recently added the DTE poles. We want to auction them off. We can't have, we don't want to have multiple auction services for every piece of equipment we have. It's one auction service.
But based on the emails we got, Mr. Deeb, we were never told. These were clearly said, city properties.
How was the motion?
It's property.
What was the motion, do you remember that, Madam Clerk? The motion for the, I think it was city-owned, it was city-owned...
City properties.
Since we're waiting for the motion, sir, do you mind if I have one more question? So I just want to be clear.
I'm, I'm here to answer all questions.
I want to be clear, sir, one second. The clerk has the answer. What is it, you can read it from the record, go ahead. Yeah, but even the motion, didn't it say vehicles? Or it said city-owned property auction.
Isn't the vehicle property? It's a property.
Mr. Deeb, man. Come on. That's property, yes.
It's a property. That would be personal property.
No, no, no.
Sir, so I want to, I want to be clear. So you said the, so a total of 8%, 5% the bidder pays. So it's not coming out of the city. The only thing that's coming out of the city is a 3%, is that correct?
No, we passed that along as well on the closing statement. As a buyer, the buyer has to pay that. And we can pass along all the other costs as well.
So the 8% is coming from the bidder?
100%, yep.
Nothing coming from the city?
Nothing. And it's very typical on how these things work for municipal auctions.
So what about title, when you transfer properties? Do you have a title company yourself?
Um, we could, Keller Williams does have a relationship with Sislow Title, but we could use a local title company. They, all of them said they would come to your city office and actually close the properties here so you guys wouldn't have to go anywhere. Go ahead. Yeah. And I also sent an email, you know, to you guys a week or two ago, you know, saying, excuse me, that, you know, if you want to have local realtors involved, we could, we could do this jointly. You know, if, if you want to have local realtors do the real estate part.
To be honest, this is our motive, to keep it local. I mean, you're local too, I mean, you're in Detroit.
But we still need to have like a service for the auction, if that's what you're gonna do.
So what do you suggest, if we, what kind of partnership you're suggesting to, when using local realtors?
Um, well, right now, you know, we, we have our 5% fee. I'd have to, you know, talk to the owner of the company to see if they would have any negotiation on, you know, a, a different fee for you to use the auction service part and, and not do the real estate at all, like the closing and the real, the realtor stuff.
Okay, you know what? That's actually, I, I like the compromise there, really.
We're here to help. You have a lot of other stuff for us to do.
Look, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm gonna tell you how I feel a little bit about this. And I don't care who gets mad or who doesn't. The city has overseen a lot of renters. I have our former councilman over here, we've seen a lot of renters in the city. We're sick of renters. This is a bedroom community.
Counsel.
And I, and I'm sorry, I take it back, I take it back, I take it back, I take it back. I'm not sick of renters. I am sick of landlords that are not holding their properties accountable. Let me take that back. Hold on. And I don't mean renters because, look, my sister rents. She lives in Dearborn Heights. I'm not gonna say you're not welcome in Dearborn Heights to my sister, my sister. But what I'm saying is, what's happening is, you're getting these big investors and this is my, this was my issue with Bidcorp. And I'm gonna tell you why I feel so personal about it. You're gonna auction something off, a guy in Florida is gonna buy the property. He's gonna bring somebody that's gonna come live in that property. That person that lives in that property doesn't care to maintain it because the guy lives in Florida. He has no idea that the house is not being maintained. And then what's happening is, the neighbors all living across the street and everybody's moving out of the city. The guy in Florida says, oh my God, the entire neighborhood is selling. I'm gonna buy it all, I'm just gonna continue to put people there. I'm gonna keep making my portfolio. And what's happening now is, people are moving out of the city. And then I, I come to the council meeting, I'm the council chair. I get screamed and yelled at by residents saying, or I go on Facebook and I open it up on the Dearborn Heights Rents and Complaints. And I'm hearing about how everybody's screaming about how terrible the city looks and how it's all renters and landlords are not keeping up with their tenants. That's all we're hearing. And so my fear is, Bidcorp, not a local person who is potentially going to be auctioning these things off, somebody from Bangladesh could be buying it for all I know. And, and here comes, since Councilman, the former Councilman is here, Joe Schlockalaki, whatever you used to call him. Schmuckatelli. Schmuckatelli's here and then he don't care. He lives in this house, he gets evicted, he goes to court, the house looks terrible. They, the county sheriff's department comes in, throw, you know, throws everything out of the house right on the lawn. Then we gotta fight with the, this is a constant thing that's happening in Dearborn Heights every single day. So this is where my fear comes from. I don't care who auctions these properties off. I just want to make sure that, like, Westland is doing something today and I think I had this conversation with some, with some of you guys. Westland has properties that are for sale. They're giving you guys a 6% concession, up to $14,000 on a, on a property for $200,000. I don't know what the math is. I'm, I'm not a real estate agent that's gonna tell you exactly. But they're six, they're, they're giving you back money for first-time home buyers. And if you live in the house as a first-time home buyer, you, you, you get this grant money. And if you sell it within the first year, you gotta pay back $14,000. And guess what that does? Now it's bringing in these families into Westland. It's not having these investors coming in and allowing people to traumatize. It's making it affordable to live in Westland. Why are we not mirroring these type of things? You know? You're telling me right now, a renter, instead of putting down the first security deposit and all these things, can buy a house at potentially $5,000? You'd have less renters and more homeowners. And now you, and you won't have as many investors. So this is, this is where, where I stand on this. I can't speak for the rest of the council. But what, and again, I want to make it very clear because Roger's giving me the stinky eye. I am not talking about renters.
No, I, I'm mirroring.
I am not talking about renters. My bigger concern is the investors that are out of state, that are, that are bringing in the renters, and then the renters that are not maintaining their home. That is my issue.
Counselor Chair, I do respect where you're coming from, but this is not, not an auction issue. This is like a deed restriction issue that the administration can implement. We can ask them what to do, and they could do it, but it's not an auction issue. They can just sell it, they can sell it to investor who would be selling it to a homeowner, or we can just sell it to homeowner. So this is, can be done, this is fixable, but it's not an auction issue though.
Okay.
And Council Chair, we're already exploring an organization that gives money for people, renters, to be able to buy, put down payment, and be able to rehab their homes. It's called Living Cities. We were already exploring, coming to the city, they've done it in ten U.S. cities. Minneapolis, St. Paul, Albuquerque, Mexico, Rochester, New York, why not Dearborn Heights? So we are doing what you're saying, it gives renters an opportunity to get a down payment and a rehab money for their homes, so.
Yeah.
Counselor Chair.
Yep, Councilman Saab.
I stated this at the meeting, the first time this got brought up, that there should be at least a fifteen-year deed restriction on these properties, that they have to be owner-occupied, and it cannot be investor-owned properties.
Fifteen years is a little strong.
It's not, if you sell it, it has to be sold again to a, to a family that's moving into the home. Again, it reduces investors and it puts families in homes.
I mean, to be honest, I don't mind selling to investors, but they have to sell to owner-occupied. I mean, a lot of people don't have the money to rehab.
If they rehab the home to sell it, it can only be sold.
Yeah, that's fine.
That's what the CAPP program was for.
Exactly. But also, with the process you're doing that, there's no system in place right now where it's tracking these homes. Because the old homes the city sold, certain people in the community.
You can track it.
No, no, you can track it, but not, all of them are rentals.
Guys, guys, point of order, hey. Let's keep, let's stay on track here. I agree with you.
A lot of the rentals that were sold in the past two years, and I can, there's a lot of residents who can verify that too. The city's never gone back and checked that they're not owner-occupied, that they're invested, they're rental properties.
I'm going to tell you this, Councilman, unless you have proof of that, you can't make these type of, these type of requests.
I, I'm not, this was, the building department was on an ordinance at the meeting, that some, some homes were not, I think Vince was the one that asked the question at the meeting when this was bought, when this was bought up.
It was about the CAPP programs that were supposed to be sold as?
No, they were sold to investors, they were supposed to flip, the homes were supposed to be owner-occupied, and they've got, been turned into rentals. There's no oversight.
Okay.
Counsel Chair, just wanted to point one thing out to you. If you look at the list of the property, the majority are vacant land. It's not, they're not homes. And the vacant land is not all buildable. So we also have non-buildable vacant land. So the idea was, when we do the advertising, we're going to encourage adjacent owners for some of the smaller properties that are not buildable. And then one more thing, before we even come up with that list to put out on the street, I had to work with the assessor to make sure that the city's own need, we're not selling something that we actually need for other projects. I.e., you just recently approved the Corps of Engineers studies, so I saved four lots that I'm going to need for, for the drainage pipes to go in and out of the incinerator. So we spent a lot of time on this thing, but the majorities are open land.
Thank you.
Counselor Chair, I'm sorry, I had one more question.
Go ahead.
So even with the properties with other cities, Mr. Deeb's question, usually Dearborn, if they buy a home and demolish it, and the law's too small, they personally go to the neighbors that are adjacent to the home, they split the lot and sell it to them for dirt cheap, maybe fifteen hundred dollars aside. But why are we using an auction service for this, when the city can do it?
So, so if you wanted to break it down, first of all, sir, Dearborn has a real estate department. Do you know how many real estate employee you have? Zero. We don't have the staff. And also, they did a lot of the advertising in Dearborn themselves. I worked with Dearborn engineer quite a bit. I don't have the staff.
So, so, so my question is, Mr. Deeb, if you guys actually reached out to local boards, the boards can help. I reached out to the city of Dearborn, and I found out that, and they can step up soon, they do the work for them. At a court, I mean, I mean, there's a commission or whatever it is they use, but that's how Dearborn does their sales. It's not for nothing. We're putting, we're putting the cost back to the.
Please.
Go ahead.
You know, you can do whatever you want, Ray, but not today. Okay, guys, Councilman Ahmad, then we're going to move over to day board, guys.
Mr. Deeb, when you said that they're not buildable, is it because size-wise, or?
Both. Side, irregular shaped, city right-of-way, you know, various things. And, and, and you can see, the assessor has a list of these things. I actually had to go visit quite a few of them, because it didn't make sense, you know, if they're, you know, irregular shaped, near a river, freeway, road right-of-way, remnants, you know, so they're not.
Were you able to narrow down the list to see exactly what we're selling?
We have lists, we have multiple, yeah, absolutely. Took out the stuff that we, so, okay, now it's coming back. So we also have things that we are not under our control, like FEMA money, or another category, TFA money. You know, so we had to go through, the list might look big, but by the time you go through all these things that you can't, you need it for city work. TFA has paid for it, FEMA paid for it, so anything that has restrictions, you take out of that list, and then the remaining are the ones that you.
Are you able to share with us the final list, to see exactly what we're selling?
Absolutely. It's just going to be a parcel number, just so, I'm sorry.
I'm so sorry, I just want to make it very clear. Only because I received this email and I'm protecting the councilman, he's not requesting this because he wants to cherry pick anything. He's requesting this just to be transparent and get a better understanding, that's all.
I intentionally, I intentionally did not put that list in, in the bid document, because I didn't want people to be looking at, you know, because it comes in parcel numbers, right? And a lot of the properties and their land, they don't have an address, it's parcel number. So I made sure in the, in the.
Just give us a number, like how many we're selling.
Oh, you don't want the actual detail, you want a number?
Like how many we're selling, yeah. Because I got a list from the mayor before, it was like two hundred and seventy-nine properties.
And I want to also make, I also want to make for the, for the record, there are a lot, you're right, a lot of vacant land, but there's also a lot of properties as well. So like, we, we keep saying that there's vacant land, kind of steer away the conversation.
No, no.
I want to make it clear, there's also a lot of land, there's a lot of homes that are also being sold as well.
This is a continuous process, so the county now is going through the tax closure, right? So I wanted to have thing in place, an official contract in place, that we can say, we have a process. When we receive something, I'm going to put it back on tax roll, not wait seven years before to do that. So when we get the next roll from Wayne County, I'm going to say, well, why do we need those? Put them on the, put them on for sale. I have a, you know, bid, I have a company that was selected properly, and we have a process in place, put them back on the street.
Thank you. Mr. Deeb, by the way, you do a wonderful job as the engineer. You do everything.
Underneath the department.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, thank you.
Sean, you done?
Um, yeah, did you have any further questions, or?
Okay.
I just do want to leave you with this, is that, you know, we're here to help. We do all different types of auction services. We've sold a plane for MDOT, we sold MDOT land, we sold a bicycle, you know, we, we sell everything, canoes, you name it. So, you know, we're here to help, and we have no problem, you know, stepping out of the real estate brokerage side of the business and partnering with local realtors.
Well, we appreciate you being here, and thank you for your input, and even, you know, you're open for a partnership, that's great. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Appreciate you.
Thank you. You guys ready?
Please introduce yourself.
Well, I want to begin by thanking you guys all for allowing us to speak today. My name is Leila DeCroupp. I am the president of the board, and I'm here with my team from the Dearborn Area Board of Realtors. I have my president-elect, and we have our historian with us here. We represent an entire realtor community of brokers and agents across southeast Michigan. Our primary focus is in Dearborn and Dearborn Heights. We have always had a good relationship with our local municipalities, and most of our members are primary residents within this very community. Our board is established to uphold the ethics and standards of our industry. We have in the past upheld agreements with this very city to ensure rules and guidelines are implemented by the building department. We are here today to present our offer on behalf of the board. We collectively have come up with an offer to arrange, accept, advise, assist, counteroffer, advertise, counteroffer, advertise, market, and negotiate properties from, on behalf of the city. And we're willing to do it at a five percent commission, five percent commission and two hundred and ninety-five dollar broker compliance fee. Out of that five percent commission, three of it will go to the buyer's agent and two to the listing broker. And that is to ensure that you get the highest bid possible. Most often, a buyer is going to have an agent, and it's going to be very difficult, especially if you're saying that you want first-time home buyers. They don't have the money to pay their buyer's agent. So that's going to put a bit of a burden on them, and so we're willing to offer up a co-op with, with that, that brokerage. With that being said, we're all established agents. We have our own social media platforms, we have our own signs, we have our own marketing agencies. We do not need you to pay for any of that. We will cover that cost, because we already have established businesses that we, we assume those costs to begin with. We don't need you to pay for any of that. With that being said, we'll also have no hidden costs, no technology fees, there's no auction fees and no service fees to be working with us. We have been within this community, a lot of these members here live in Dearborn Heights. We're very familiar with, with the local community, we know the neighborhoods inside and out, and I think a lot of us already know each other from, from, from our industry as well. By doing so, this will allow the city to, to, by doing so, the city will be able to make this far more profitable for them, and it would allow for a more competitive price point for the purchaser and the new resident. To ensure that there is no nepotism, what we've decided collectively as a board to do is that, one, we all come from multiple brokerages to begin with. So what we would be presenting is that, once we get an offer in, it would go to a general email where everybody would receive it, and you guys will have access to that as well. And then there will be two agents from different brokerages presiding over them at the same time. So then there's no cherry picking, there's no nepotism, there's no anybody, you know, doing a favor for this person, or, you know, my client's been looking, so I'm going to try to push that to side. It won't be possible to do so if, if we, if we bring in the offers that way. So with that being said, historically, we have always been a collaborative partner with the city, and we are here to do what's best for the community and maintain the tradition and do everything possible that's in the best interest of Dearborn Heights. There's no need to go outside of the community to sell within our own neighborhood. We have our own title companies, such as Title One, Title Connect, there's Venture Title, there's Estate Titles, and, you know, they're all members within this community too. They have been working here for years, I believe. Title One has been around for over thirty years, they've been a, a working member within our community as well. So I really don't see a need why we should be hiring a brokerage in Bloomfield, or someone outside of even our county, not even just our city. With that being said, I know that, and I heard what you had to say about not wanting investors to eat up all of these properties. And there are programs out there, and we kind of wanted to mirror them, such as like the First Look program. We could decide later on how long you would want that to be for, but we could put it out there for two weeks, that only.
The first ten days, I think, is how they do it, right?
Yeah, yeah. It's a First Look program, and then what, what that means is that it's going to be for a primary resident first. So if an investor comes, he can't touch it until a certain amount of days. And what that ensures is that the best properties will go to first-time home buyers, and then we can set in place how many years that they would have to reside there before they could actually sell it. But that's something that we can work on the, the other end. But I do want you to know that we do have programs in, in place like this, and we are very familiar with working that strategy out.
Leila, I got a question for you. Actually, I have two questions for you. I know you said that many of you here all work together in different brokerages. I know like Remax, Leading Edge, Remax, Team Two Thousand, Keller Williams, EXP, you know.
C21.
C21.
Hometown. We, we have everyone from large brokerages to boutique brokerages, yes.
Okay. My question is, let's just say, Josh Makalaki works at, and I only use that right now because council, former councilman Musket's here. But let's say Josh Makalaki works somewhere else.
Right.
And he's not part of your guys' board. Let's just say, I mean, give me a small shop, ABC Realty. How do they now know that these properties, because they're not a part of the email chain, because they're not a part of the board, so they have no way of communicating to be either the seller or the buyer's agent?
Well, they're on the MLS.
Oh, okay, so.
They would be on the MLS. We're going to advertise them like any other property. Not only will they be on the MLS, but they will be on Zillow, they'll be on Realtor.com, they'll be on our social platforms. There is going to be no way that you're not going to be able to see this. If you are searching for a home, it is going to pop up in front of you.
Okay.
You don't even have to have the MLS available to you. As long as you're online, it, it'll be there. So anybody who's looking will be able to see this house.
And even if somebody's a part of another board, we will compensate them. It's all about who gives us the highest and best offer on that property. We want to get top dollar for these properties, and that's the ultimate goal. My, my, I'm so sorry, my second question, that was a good answer, thank you, answered my question. My second question to you is, yeah, why did I forget my second question? What do you, you guys, are you guys currently doing this today?
Yes, we do this with every one of our properties.
Can you give me an example of how you guys do it currently?
Yeah. So when I take on.
What city, and, and, or the historian?
You know what, I'm going to let Ted take over, and then I think Bill will.
Historically, there's been a need in the cities that we serve, when a dignitary needs to sell property, or when the city ends up owning property by accident, or for whatever reason, to try and serve them. So the board has decided, in their leadership position, to find a system so that the mayor, the board, the, the property owned by the city can come, and we have a system in place, where, you know, initially, twenty, a hundred years ago, we used to do it where all the commission would go to whoever brought the buyer, and the president would do everything. But nowadays, there's a lot more work involved, so to syndicate it and to get it out there to everywhere. So now we've come up with a system with the board where we just rotate based on seniority and position. President, president-elect, past president, treasurer, and then to each of the directors, and then back to the beginning. So that some one individual's in charge, but the process is the same. This is what we do every day. And the idea is, there's no favoritism, it's strictly business, and who better than your own local Board of Realtors? So have we done it? Yeah, the city of Dearborn a few years back had a number of properties, and, and that's when we revised it this time. By the way, I'm Teddy Strahan, I'm the historian, and I've done this forty-three years. But, but I've been on the board about six different times. And I'm really impressed with this board. They are dynamic, they're young, they represent the community, and they're doing a fantastic job. And I just come in, you know, just to look over their shoulder and, you know, help when I can, but I, more often than not, I'm just telling them what they're doing right. So very proud of the work they're doing. But we're here to help you. We collaborate. You know, when you talk about why, it's because we are neutral and we focus on the process, and we have all the tools in place. The second thing, you know, sometimes an auction is the right idea, but if it's, if it's not real estate. But when it's real estate, when there's some work that can be done to present it, if, and each property is different. So the individual who's in charge of that individual property is going to say, well, this one, it can't be built on, we'll split it with the neighbors, and we'll recommend that. Next one, it needs to be built, you know, we want it to be built within twelve months for owner-oc. Third one, nobody can afford to fix it, so an investor wants it, we put a deed restriction. When he's finished within X number of time, and the council can be involved in that, in those limits, then with the deed restriction, the investor can only sell it to owner-occupied. So there's lots of nice tools that we've developed over the years to make sure the city's priorities are taken care of. We're here because we have your back. So when I listen to the concerns, I think, thank God, we're here, because that's what we do.
Thank you. Councilman Constant, you had a question?
Yes, or just some comments. So the realtors are bound by a code of ethics. They can, they're local, they can show the property, they have put it in a multi-list, they can bring buyers, you have buyers. And what I, I've been pressing law for thirty-six years, when I think of an auction, I think of investors. You know, a young couple going to buy a property doesn't buy a property at auction, a family that's going to move in.
We don't believe auction is the way to get the most money for the city. The idea of having an auction, when, when you go to an auction, what is your goal? To pay the least money possible and to, to compete. When we get involved, you don't have to be in a hurry. You just have to have a process that's fair and transparent, so that anyone who looks at it can say, oh, I had a chance to buy that too, as long as I could comply with the, either the rehab and the deed restriction, or the owner-occupied. So that's an easy restriction to deal with, but the auction wouldn't necessarily be the way to get the most money for the city.
Somebody, a buyer, that's going to buy the property at auction, like I say, a young couple, they're not going to be aware of what they need to do to get good and complete title.
Right. And, and they're going to have costs involved for them, extra costs that they're, they're not going to necessarily pay if they're being represented by, or represented by a buyer's agent, that's going to be compensated to give us top dollar on this property. Typically, you may.
It would be two and three.
Correct. And we, and we collect two percent, and we give out three. And, and just to make things more clear, this is not about us, the board, or any specific brokerage, or any single realtor out there that anybody knows. This is all about the city taxpayer, the city residents, and to get them top dollar on these properties with the least amount of money that they have to pay. Now, if we brought a buyer forward, that somebody calls us the board, you know, we may just take the two percent. Maybe we may discount it. There's probably going to be some flexibility, I would suggest, as well. So.
I also want to add, because of the way that we have it structured, would allow for first-time home buyers, just like you said, Councilman. Most of these newbies, they're not going to be running around to auctions. They don't know how they work. A lot of their agents may not even know how they work, and, and some of, yeah. And, and like you said, it's, sometimes it's more appealing to investors, because when you think of auction, you usually need cash, and then, then they will be deprived of representation. And then also not offering a buyer's agent would also keep out a lot of the VA loans. So you would be discriminating against veterans. Veterans cannot pay a buyer's agent to represent them. They would have to go straight to whoever is selling that property.
They're felt to not have representation from the buyer's agent.
Yeah. So we would be, make, ensuring that these people would not be discriminated against in that way.
Or doctors.
Yeah.
And we also, if the city really wants an auction type of thing to go on, we do have the tools and the capability of doing that as well, but which we don't recommend.
Well, we're not in a rush, like, I mean, that's what you think of when you think of an auction. How long has the board been handling Dearborn's foreclosure, city of Dearborn?
I mean, the board is what, about a hundred and ten years old?
We're, yeah, we're over a hundred years old, but we didn't handle city property, well, back in the old days. In the old days, let me tell you a story. No, back, the president would take the lead and offer the entire commission to whatever buyer brought the best offer. The whole idea was to incentivize the buyers with whatever restrictions were required. Nowadays, business is a little more expensive than it used to be, so that's where the two percent comes in. It's not a money thing, though. This is to have your back. This is so you can be neutral, but make sure the city benefits by getting the most money possible. And because each property is different, the plan might not be the same for one property as the next. We have the flexibility, we have the title company already in place. The non-real estate items, we're going to still need our auctioneer, anything that's not real estate related. But because Dearborn Heights is so unique with five different segments, we have to be able to deal with it based on what's in front of us. And these boards, they're elected, our nine directors, they're dedicated. They spend a lot of time volunteering just to make sure the, the ethics are, are protected, and the, all the new members coming into the industry understand how things work. So we're, we're the frontline army. We enforce all the rules the city makes for building, for each house, and this is just one more extension of that. We're here to have your back. We're not going to make a lot of money in this, but we're going to feel good about it. We take care of you, you take care of us. That's what a good city and a good Board of Realtors is all about.
Thank you. Councilman Saab, you had a question?
The board members there. First question, my first question is that if, you know, we get the first-time buyers that, you know, you listed for ten or fourteen days, for example. My question would be, when we list them after, you know, like investors that want to get. Would it be highest and best do, let's say in fourteen days and it comes back to the city for council for approval? Or how would that process work?
Well, that's, that's all going to be dependent on how many offers you're getting.
If it's a multiple offer situation.
Multiple offer situation, you, you might not even get that. But the first ten days, I think we'll, we'll probably want to extend that a little bit.
Yeah, what I said, ten to fourteen days, whatever it may be.
Probably be thirty days.
I would go thirty days as well.
Probably be first thirty days.
My, my, my second question is to Corporation, Council, Corporation, Council, if we, uh. We're selling these properties as is, whereas can we, can the city do the title work as we're, as a warranty deed or a quick clean deed?
Well, the three we sold, um, last year, um, we did it with a title company we used. We did put that deed restriction that you say to only home, homeowners occupied. Um, that was part of what the council wanted and we made sure it was in there. Um, I think Mr. Deeb and I have talked about different ways to do it, so.
Most, most loans, so you're going to want to, you want to have a clear title and it's part of, part of the fees that we're, we're offering. It's, it's all included in it.
It's included in it with, okay.
We have a company that, that already does our title work for properties.
No need to do anything.
So their fee, so their fee, I guess includes a title work.
Yeah, I think the auction company has that too.
So maybe the question in play would be the bringing up the house up to code to get a certificate of arguments?
No, the certificate of arguments, that's completely sound. Whoever buys the home would have to definitely bring the home up to code to move in or rehab it, whatever the condition may be.
Incentives built in for owner occupied.
For owner occupied incentives.
Sustainability is an issue.
And, uh, my other question is if, if we decided to go with, put in a, uh, process in place, is what we're looking to do here, the most efficient process to. You know, bring in the most revenue possible for the city. Um, would the board be looking like you, like you folks said, that these properties we looked at, if we can't build them? And we can't use them. Or that, you know, they're not buildable lots or everything with those, you guys would slash those out and, uh. How would the process be done on splitting those or how does other cities usually do and the cost of that?
So that, I could tell you from my personal experience and Mr. Deeb actually brought that up. What, what Dearborn did was it's a simple letter. That they would send to the neighbors and it was, if you had a piece of property. And I think at the time there were thirty foot frontage, I think then you can't build on them. Uh, before they changed it. So it was a thirty foot frontage that sent a letter to each house on site. They would tell them that they would split the lot. At five hundred dollars. At the time it was five hundred dollars. You pay, each person would pay five hundred dollars and you get half the lot. That's all that, it was a simple letter. And if they said, if one neighbor said yes and the other one said no. They'd pay a thousand dollars and he'd get the whole lot.
The whole point would be they maintain the lot, they pay taxes on the lot, they clear the lot.
It's your lot at that point. That's all it was.
So.
Yeah, you can't, it's not a buildable lot. It's all, it was a simple letter from the, I think it was the assessor's office that, that did it.
And, and a good concept behind that, all these homes are so close to each other and so small by giving those empty lots, splitting them would make. The property lines bigger in the near future if people want to add or additions or.
If you don't mind, Councilman.
You have the room.
And another incentive that you could do, if say somebody, I mean, times are tight. You know, and people don't have that kind of money maybe. You could say, no problem. You can, you could actually. Uh, put it on their taxes over certain amount of years, you know, a hundred dollars a year or something. They're not even going to feel it, but you took it off your hand, you took it off, you know, maintaining that property or whatever. And it's such a, you're giving it away basically anyways. You're not, the city's not going to feel it. But you've gained, you know, the residents have gained something, you know, that's, that's my opinion. I mean, and, and it's. It's, it's just an easy way of getting it off the books.
Yeah, just it cuts down on cost on loan, loan mowing and everything.
I got a, I got a good question. Are you done?
I'm all set.
Um. Now, when we say things are going to be listed, which brokerage office is going to be listing this?
Whoever the listing agent is.
How do you determine that?
So we do the Red Robin.
It's, it's the nine members and it's going to be.
Whoever.
Every, every property will just.
Hypothetically.
Yeah.
I get the first listing. That's mine. He gets the second, the third, the fourth, the fifth. Everybody's responsible for their own listing, but when it comes to accepting an offer. Not one person, we, the board would have a meeting to accept the offers. That way, all the offers are put together. Everybody reads them and best offer gets picked. That way you could never say that, oh, he took, you know, he took the best offer. You took, you can't. Because everybody's seen the offer.
There's a lot of transparency.
So everything's up, up in front of everybody. But whoever's got the listing is responsible for marketing. Now, we all basically market the same thing. It's going to be on over five hundred and, you know, some odd websites. All the Realtor dot coms, the Zillos, the Trulias, the MLS and we all market basically on every single, uh, website. So.
The city gets the same benefits that other private sellers get without any additional cost. And we have a fair system that with the rotation so that there's never a weak point.
How often do you guys? So.
We, and, and we'll, we'll also put on our social media platform.
Yeah, yeah. I know. My, my question is this. So there's nine of you guys, nine of you will get potentially. Split up. Twenty properties, let's just say. Let's just say twenty properties each. I'm just giving, throwing a hypothetical, fifteen properties each, right? And two percent for you guys, three percent for the buyer's agent. I'm just thinking out loud. Why wouldn't it be where? The brokerage. Of each company received ten or fifteen enlisted.
Broke, the brokerage, you mean the, the, the brokerage can't take it.
We, because we want to hand them off as they come. You give us one, the, this brokerage, it's.
I'll, I'll tell you why.
It's the body that's going to be managing.
I'll answer it very easy. The brokerage itself can't take it because the brokerage is going to sit there and give it to an agent.
And by the way.
We, we can't control at that point. We can't control the offers that come in.
You all work at different brokerages.
Yes, we, we want to also mention something like. Broke, uh, Remax, Lea, Leading Edge would charge probably a buyer broker fee of maybe four hundred dollars. This buyer, this brokerage is six hundred. So we're doing a flat fee of two ninety-five and we're making.
I'm not, I'm not concerned about that, but what I'm saying is it's contradicting when you say. You know, you can't give it to the brokerage office, but you can give me who I work for the brokerage office and you could potentially hand that off as well.
No, no, no.
No, I can't hand it off.
We can hand that off.
Hand that off to whom?
Who, whom am I going to hand it off to?
If you were to assign, so hypothetically, you were to assign.
The mic, please.
Oh, okay. So hypothetically, you were to assign me a listing. I'm, I'm with Remax Team Two Thousand. I would not be able to assign that to someone else. So I would be.
No, but you can call them and say, hey, I got this property. Come in, put in an offer.
Well, anybody can put in an offer. Wouldn't you want me to advertise your property and tell people put in an offer? Why, why would, but why wouldn't you want that? At the end of the day, the offer still has to be presented to everyone. So.
It's still going to hit the market.
Guys, guys, I'm getting, so my question that I'm getting to is you have nine people.
Yeah.
Potentially three can be, let's just say three from Century Twenty One. I'm not saying three are.
I see.
What if the brokers, ABC, Joe Shakalaki doesn't have somebody that can be picked up and say?
One of us is bound to.
No, 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 no. The property, the property has to hit the market.
And it's got to sit on the market.
And it has to sit on the market for. Uh, a minimum, the, the way they used to do it, minimum of ten days and the way they used to do it, a minimum of ten days and it has to stay on the market for.
Because. Uh, owner occupied for thirty days.
No, there's no, there's no, you gave me a listing or, 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 and I'm going to go say, hey, let's sell it and my brokerage.
I, I'm going to give, I'm going to give you.
It'll never bypass the market. It'll stay there for at least a minimum amount of time to give everybody an opportunity to bring a for.
I believe it was ten days. The bank used to do it. It had to be on the market for ten days before they would look at any offers.
Do I get to see these offers?
So Fannie Mae does something like that. It's called a first look program. What they do is they put the property on the market for thirty days and it has to be on the MLS. You'll see it and it'll say days on market. You'll see thirty there and till the thirty first date, that is when an investor can bid on it. But within those thirty days, a first time home buyer can, can purchase it, but it will have to hit the market. So, I mean, we could call and tell anybody we want, but it's still going to go to the market and everybody's going to know about it regardless.
You want us to tell everybody and whoever we know, but it's going to be out there.
Then on top of that, like I said, all offers would be presented in front of the board. So not one person's looking at the offer. The board will be reviewing all offers. So no, there's a, it's a, it's a fair game. It's a fair game for anybody.
There'll be, there'll be a lot of transparency. Everything will come through our, via email through all board members and we'll, we'll all be able to review that.
And this will, this will all be put into a plan for you guys to see.
We're leaving something important out of this. The city is going to be acting as the sellers. So we are going to, we are going to have one email address to where all offers. Are going to be sent to that email address with the transparency of it being sent over to. The city as the sellers to go ahead and review those offers. So we as a board aren't making the decision of what offer we're taking. You guys represent basically the seller to where you are accepting those offers.
I don't know, I don't know if the body, if the council body would, would review these offers or you may want to appoint somebody to look at all offers, right?
So, so here's how Dearborn, you, you used to handle this and I think they still do. I believe that her name was Alicia. She was their legal staff. Uh, all offers would be presented to her and then she would go over them. Obviously, like if you have ten offers, you're going to take the top three that are in the highest and best. And you're going to really emphasize on those, but she would be given all ten of them for her to review. And she would be that person who is the final decision and whoever your, your Lisa is here would, would be the person that would be our direct contact person.
Okay. I know, I remember like one time there was, I was watching a Dearborn's city council meeting and there was a property up for sale and they were awarding it to. Uh, a guy for like a hundred and fifty thousand. And then a Realtor who put in an offer on it for like a hundred thousand dollars more.
Yep.
Showed up and said like, my offer didn't, wasn't accepted. It was never reviewed. It was never accepted. Susan, at the time, former council president Susan Abaja was like, hold on, like, why were you not informed of this? And then they stopped that.
Right.
And so like.
That's when, that's what called us to start. When that happened, they said, no more. They hired Daybor. Our system was in place.
And, and by the way, I, I ended up calling Susan and saying, well, what did you do in this process? And that's when she said, we reached out to Daybor.
That's when we got hired.
And that's when Dearborn hired you guys because there was some type of backdoor deal that was, and I, I don't know who the company was that was at the time. It was O'Reilly and, uh.
No names.
Well, I mean, I'm saying like the mayor was already at the time.
Enough said.
Yeah. Um, so, so I, I appreciate this.
All of this that was discussed, there's nothing to, you know. Say anything against Bit.
This, this, we're, we're having great, candid conversation. Then ultimately, at the end of the day, the administration and the mayor is going to present something in front of us.
But I mean, we don't sell cars though on, on.
Or canews.
You know, but I mean, maybe, I mean, would you guys also be open to a collaboration maybe with Bitcorp? You guys can potentially go about selling the properties. Maybe Bitcorp could go about selling the seized properties.
Of course, yeah, of course. And, and the reason why we, we're a little bit tense about it, we, when we heard about this and we discussed with other Realtors. There was a little tension that.
He put upside.
Why did the city go outside? I mean, we have like five, like seven or eight brokerages just inside the city. And the city went outside. And not even, you know, discussed this with us, with the brokerage, you know, or, or with Daybor.
Why did your brokerage bid on it?
You know, we didn't know about it.
We didn't.
And that was my question was that you're supposed to locally advertise.
We didn't know about it. And, and you know, you know, I'm, I'm going to just, I'm going to be a little blunt here. You know, I have a pretty close relationship with, with a lot of members of, of the city, even the mayor. You know. Just a, hey, Bill, you know, this is going to be happening. Why don't you guys look at the, at, you know.
Well, I'll tell you this.
Internet or something.
I, I'm going to tell you this and, and you know what? I don't care who gets in trouble for this. I think Councilman, uh, Saab reached out to you guys and then we were being told that we were playing some type of nepotism and we were under investigation for that.
No, no, he, he did reach out and he said.
And I don't think he did anything unethical. I commend you for that.
And, and the question that Councilman Saab asked was, hey, he's like, he, he asked me, Sam, do you know anything about this?
That's all he asked.
About the properties that the, the, that the city has that would like to sell? And we were like, no, we have no idea, you know? And look, we want to be partners with the city to do what's best for the city.
That's it.
That's it. It's not about Councilman, with all due respect, Councilman Saab or Moby or, or, I, I respect everybody in this room. You guys are all public servants. You know, you, you're elected officials doing what's best for the city residents.
Just like we are.
And I'm speaking as a Dearborn Heights resident, not just as a board director or a president-elect. So.
I also, I also want to add one more thing. So every, uh, board member here was elected by a group of their peers. And we do have term limits. So we're here for three years and then we're gone. So you don't have to deal with one of us forever, except, except Bill. He's kind of, he's been there, he's been our longest standing board member, but, but both.
Wasn't he a historian?
Um, how many times are you?
I've served on the board five different times. I'm not an elected board. I'm really an ex-official and I don't vote on these things.
Yeah.
I'm just the oldest guy in the room.
He's not, he's not a voting member, but we, we saw that we needed a historian to kind of try to guide us through and, you know.
I knew all the pictures on the wall of the past presidents.
All right, guys. I appreciate you guys' time. Thank you for coming here today.
Thank you for having us.
I, I, uh, any, any other questions from the council members? Councilwoman?
Thank you.
Councilman, Councilman.
Thank you for calling.
Um, my, my, uh, next thing, I guess we'll have, uh, members of the public. Any questions from members of the public? Any questions from members of the public? Just please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on.
You've got three minutes.
Um, Rachel Lapointe, Merrick Street, Dearborn Heights. Um. In general, I'm going to say the, the problem that we're having in the conversation that needs to happen, and it probably needs to happen privately. Is that the mayor is not working with you guys and not cooperating with you guys and not giving you the information early enough. For you to make decisions when he needs you to. So I really hope that like moving forward, we can start seeing that you guys are working together better. That the mayor's getting you guys information with plenty of time to do your research, ask your questions before the meetings, all that kind of stuff. Um, I was watching the cable channel put up the, there was an event that the mayor went to in Taylor or something. The Taylor mayor, and he talked about this program. He said, he was talking, I'm, I'm disappointed he's not here because he was talking about something about. Rehabbing the houses we own with the Veterans Association of some sort. Um. So I don't know if there's now maybe a different plan in the works. I was hoping to ask him about that. Um, and then I just wanted, I shared it with you all, um, and I posted it on DBH four one one. But I had done some research on what, um, properties the city owns through public records. So if any members of the public are interested in that, that's on Facebook and anybody who knows me and wants to reach out can feel free to do that. Thank you.
Also for you guys that don't know, Rachel Lapointe streams every single meeting, either it's on Zoom or in person. She's been doing this for a little while over two and a half years.
I mean, a year.
On streaming.
Yeah, a little over a year.
Yep. So I mean, I want you to know, thank you, Rachel, for all that you do. Honestly, uh, I commend you for everything that you do. Sometimes you may call me six, seven times a day. Sometimes you don't come. I'm just joking.
Good evening, uh, gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen.
Please state your name, the city you reside in.
Honorable council chair and members, Ray Muscat, uh, Havlock Street. Um, I, I apologize for not keeping up with what's going on. That's my, an issue with me, okay? And, uh, so I'm coming into this kind of blind.
One sided?
No, no, I'm, I'm not one sided. I'm coming into it blind, but I, uh, you know, and, and I agree with Rachel. Uh, you know, there's a lot of things that come before council. You know, we get our packet, or I shouldn't say we. You guys get your packets on Thursday and then you've got a big decision to make on Tuesday. So some of the things that, I, I mean, you don't know about this stuff, okay? So there is this little short period of time. Um, a couple of questions. One, when was the bid put out? When was, was it officially put out on BidNet? Does anybody know that?
I think it said January eighth.
January eighth and here we are. It's, we're in April, okay? So it was out on BidNet. So it was out there quite a while.
It was on it for three weeks.
Three weeks. It, it, and usually, and if memory serves me correct, at all the years that I've been coming to this. Room, which is a lot of years. BidNet is usually open, bids are only open for about three or four weeks, all of them.
Right, but you know, I can tell you something. Pause this time real quick, please. Since you've been here on council, how many times have you got up and said, okay, what did Dearborn Heights bid on and let me see what's coming before us? We don't do that. Come on.
I believe, but that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
That, I'm, I'm getting.
We had no idea it was put out on January eighth.
But, but I'm, I'm, I'm getting to that point, okay? Somewhere along the line, council's going to have to get their heads together, say, okay, bids are now going to be lasting five to six weeks. We're not going to be doing a short term thing. We did that before. Now we have another group of people that are coming in after the bids have been proposed. How do, you can't, you, 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 legally, you really can't have them.
Legally, we didn't agree to.
Well, that's what I'm saying, but they can't just join in now. The bids have already been posted and put in unless you guys change it.
Yeah.
That, that's all the comments I'm going to make about it. Just want to make sure that, that everything is done, you know, kosher wise.
You know what you requested for, pause that, Ray, when you were on council? To market whenever we go on BidNet. You know what's still not happening? We're still not marketing. Those are, those are your requests.
Again, I'm agreeing with you. I'm not saying that you, you're wrong about this.
Yeah.
What I'm saying is you guys have got to change it. You know, uh, it, it unfortunate, it never changes. Just like, you know, we've had ordinances that we had that.
And enforced. Not enforced.
Not enforced. Uh, Angela posted something about the, the polls being picked up. God knows how long did I fight that? Okay?
Every, every meeting.
So, so I'm just, I'm just agreeing with what's going on, but I'm saying the bid was put out, it was there, they didn't go on BidNet to see any. They didn't go on BidNet to see anything. How do you get the word out? I'm not, I don't know that.
I could tell you, pause this time, same way we're pushing up for the cadets. I see it everywhere. It's got Officer Masloom, the mayor's face, and another officer, blue writing, and it's being sponsored on social media. Why are we not sponsoring, "Hey, we got 100 properties. Everybody come in bid." I promise you, Ray, we would have had 100 different people on it.
All I know is I one time said, when we were hiring, we need to be, put it in the newspapers, just like this. City of Warren is always in the newspaper.
Always.
Okay. So, but I'm just a little food for thought. I have no stake in this game, but I do know, as a resident, I want to get something for free, okay? And if there's a company out there that's going to give it to me for free, that's, if I was sitting in your chair, that's who I'd be voting for. If it's a company that's going to give it to me for free with no money from taxpayer pockets at all.
Let me ask you a question. Now, I'm gonna play it back and forth. I agree with you. And if there's one person that you understand that looks up to you, it's Moby Lou that looks up to Ray Muscat, right? Now, let's just say he gives it to us for free, and the highest bid is $110,000. Then we come back, and we got Daybor that marketed us and brought us a buyer, and the house was sold at $250,000.
Well-
Now, we have left $150,000 of snake in the game and potentially, uh, an investor.
Again, it's another crap shooting when you sell property, okay?
Yeah, I agree with you.
Hasan Ahmad knows that, you know. I sold my mom's house when she passed away, and-
By Sonia Harajni.
Yeah, that was her first home she sold.
Yeah.
There was a bidding war on it.
That's what I'm saying.
Three days, and I had, you know, I wanted the house sold for $180,000, and I'm walking away with $225,000, okay? So I mean, real estate is a, it's a crazy thing.
You know how many Realtors are between Dearborn and Dearborn Heights? The number?
It's after the number.
Take a wild guess.
I don't know.
Take a guess. Don't number any.
I have no idea.
Hold on. Take a wild guess, Councilman.
150.
780.
Okay, well.
780.
I'm in the wrong business.
Two of them right here.
I was in the wrong. But anyway, you know, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but that was my feelings toward it. The bid was there. Unless you guys change it, then it's always going to stay that way, because it's been like this since 1963, folks. This is not something that's new. The mayor, the present mayor didn't do this. This has been there since 1963, and it's something that just council has never, ever done. So, um-
Thank you.
Remember that. That's all.
Council chair, that's just for a thing.
Hang on, one second.
When you advertise, when you advertise on BidNet only, there's a lot of, there's a lot of people that don't have access.
Going to board, guys. Come on.
When you bid just only on BidNet and city's website, there's a lot of people that don't have access to it or not. There's a lot of people that don't have access to BidNet or pay for BidNet. BidNet is not free. And legally, you're supposed to advertise and market locally first, or you just go on the internet. I mean, those are just, those are standard laws you have to follow. We don't follow them. So that's, and this city, this body here, before myself and Councilman Maxwell got on, you guys, you guys said that, you know, you wanted advertised everywhere, newspaper, billboards, whatever, and I mean-
Not billboards, but we said social media.
It doesn't matter where. None of the day is that, again, the administration still does not abide to what you ask for.
And that might be illegal, right, Councilman? Former Councilman? We-
Go ahead, sir.
You talking to me or Ray? Vince Strapkowski, Columbia Street. Back, back in the several days, several years back, I should say, the council used to have to have bids out for over 30 days, okay? And they were advertised Detroit News, Detroit Free Press, and Press and Guide. Yes, really. They had to be out for 30 days.
What changed?
Okay. Yeah, social media, and I got to have it down, you know. Bids started coming in through fax machines, computer networking, and stuff like that. That's what's changed, okay? The bids should still be out there for 30 days, let people know, get it out on the newspapers, the local newspapers. There used to be, what, three local newspapers? Press and Guide, Dearborn Press and Guide, and the Dearborn Hometown, whatever it was. Yeah.
Yeah, that was a charter change.
Okay. Now you got mail addressed. Anyway, if we did that, and also, like I had mentioned a couple of weeks ago at one of the council meetings, you know, we need to get back to opening these bids in public. All the bids were formally opened at council meetings. Not given to, not given to the clerk's office, let the clerk or whoever, or mail them over to Mr. Deeb's office, whatever office they were going to, let them open them. All those bids should be open right there in the center of that table.
I agree.
Okay?
Councilwoman?
Yeah, when I was council chair, I did sit down on a few bids that were opened in front of me to witness it. So it has happened, but just not recently, since I've been gone.
It was actually the golf course, right?
No. That was the right of first refusal ones, the tax foreclosure.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
Was that here, or was-
And they open them.
Was that- Was that here, council chair, or was it, because I know they used to do it at City Hall at 3 o'clock, it used to be.
It was.
And the water department, they would all be in front of the water department, yep. And I think since COVID, they have. I mean, I could be wrong, but I think it was since COVID they have not had that.
I've never been told or asked to show somewhere before opening up a bid, ever.
This was prior to 2020, I want to say.
Yes, it was. It was.
So you're saying former Mayor Pollock used to do it?
Absolutely.
Okay, and one other thing. Could you, when you get these stipulations together, however you're going to go, remember, we've got a community and economic development department that can help these new residents rehab homes, okay? Let's put that in there. It's a stipulation. You got to get your home or assistance through, or proposal through the city. You know, any type of monies that are available through the comm dev, if that can be put in there. And if you're voting tonight, my-
I'll vote.
Okay, okay.
A study session.
All right. That's, that's good. All right, that's all I got for you. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Go ahead. Are you speaking as behalf of Daybor, or are you speaking as a resident of Dearborn Heights?
Well, a Daybor and a Realtor, so I just want to address-
On behalf of Daybor.
On behalf of Daybor. So I wanted to address something that Mr. Muscat brought up. There is no such thing as a free lunch. You're not doing, he's not doing anything for free when you guys go through that auction. What they're doing is they are putting out a price to auction for the property, but what they're telling them is, is, now you have to set money aside to pay your agent, and then you have to pay us directly. So they're taking money out of the city's pocket by not only advertising it this way, but that investor is not dumb. He knows that cost, that he has to pay the 5% to the auction company, plus the other 3% to the, to the, to the brokers company as well. So he's paying 8% on top of whatever the marketing price is. So you might be walking away with X amount of whatever that price point is, but they're taking 8% on top of that. What we're doing is, is we're pricing the properties with the 5% included, and we're offering to a buyer's agent money so that they could bring you an even higher offer. So we're using that 3% as an investment for you. So there's, there's no such thing as they're doing it for free and we're not. They're getting paid for it. They're just getting paid on a different side of the Altus statement.
Right. So in the event, if that buyer has to pay 8%, may hinder his down payment on a loan, therefore you might lose about 30% on your property. And another thing also I'd like to mention- Get into the mic, please. Also, I'd like to mention that auction companies, I mean, they're a great tool for a lot of things, but they don't adapt to market conditions. In a buyer's market, what are you going to do? How are you going to attract people to come in? I mean, not right now, we're fortunate to have very low inventory, and we're in a seller's market. So what happens when we, when the market shifts? How are you going to adapt to market conditions? Then the city's going to have to bring this back and rethink the process and say, "Oh, now we got to come back and do business as usual with listing agents and selling agents."
I also, I just, I want to also add, the emphasis on wanting new homeowners here and not to have investment companies. That is a really good reason why these co-ops should exist in the real estate world. When you are offering up to the buyer's agent 3% commission, that purchaser is not, they don't now have to take out of their down payment amount and pay them on their own side of the Altus statement. So with that being said, what that would do is, by not offering a co-op, you're discriminating against first-time homebuyers and VA loans, because they can't afford to, and VA legally can, is not allowed to.
Or, yeah.
Yeah, they're not.
And the buyer's agent just makes the process a lot easier.
Smoother.
And smoother. You know, it's, it's just, it's a win-win. I just want to make it clear, former Councilman Muscat, I don't think he has an issue with you guys or anybody that's going about it.
No, no, I know.
I think his concern was, he's speaking proper policy and procedure.
Right.
Hey, this has already went through a bid. You may not be able to do one, two, and three, unless you change what the language of the bid is, then they can come back and they can apply. And you know what? If things were free, it'd be beautiful. I agree with you 100%.
I just didn't want anyone to think that, you know, this one was free and this one wasn't, because, you know, it was just, yeah. And believe me, we agree with you, and we would have had, wanted to have known sooner, and we would have been able to have been better prepared. I mean, they were at my house all night yesterday. We were putting this together and gathering our thoughts, because we really, we really didn't know. But, oh, well, you're invited next time. But thank you, guys.
And you're welcome to come visit us at the, at our local board anytime, any day. Yeah. All right, Mr. Saab, I'm going to have to ask you to sit down. Ma'am, please state your name, the city you reside in, and the street you live on.
Yes, Zainab Aiman. I'm actually a Dearborn resident, but I'm here with the board. I just want-
The street you live on, not the address.
Oh, on Nightingale Street.
Thank you.
Like we've stated before, we have over 750 agents that are within the Dearborn and Dearborn Heights city limits. I think maybe one or two were presented with this, that this was put on for bidding. We've talked to different brokerages. We've talked to different agents as well. We've talked to affiliates. Nobody was aware of this. So to just say that this was advertised, we should have had, oh, we, you know, you snooze, you lose, basically. You had the opportunity at the time to go ahead and present your bid, and you didn't get it, but if we have over 700 agents that are all saying the same thing, we weren't given the opportunity, we weren't aware of it, there was no notice to it. Where's the fairness in that? So I just wanted to-
Don't feel bad.
Make that statement there.
Can you pause your time for a second? So my, just an answer to your, to your question. So I do agree with you that nobody got noticed, because again, the law says that it's got to be locally advertised also, and it wasn't. And again, there's some people that don't have access to internet in our city, and there's some people that don't have access to BidNet. I guarantee you 90%, maybe 95% of people in this room don't have access to BidNet.
Or 99, right?
Or 99, to be honest with you.
I don't have access to BidNet.
It's not free, and you pay for the bids, and-
Yeah.
But again, so just for the record, Mr. Dan, again, some people don't have access. Again, I'm saying, some people don't have access.
Come on, nothing from the audience.
But people don't have access to internet. People can't afford internet. So this is why the newspapers and flyers and stuff should have been, should have been listed here at City Hall.
Correct. So if this was something that was to be given as an equal opportunity to whomever wanted to, I mean, we could have had 760 agents come out and, you know, propose their bid to this, or different brokerages go ahead and put together some type of presentation to where they want to go ahead and represent it. Again, it was the public, and then along with Realtors were unaware of this whole bidding.
It was poorly, it was poorly put together. I agree.
And that's what brought us here today.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Hello, ma'am. Please state your name, the city you reside in, the street you live on.
Lila Hamka. I live in Dearborn Heights on Kenmore Street.
Thank you.
Thank you for having us today. I wanted to say, on a lighter note, that our board is hosting, this is open to the community, to the public, our second annual Home and Garden Expo on April 28th at Park Place. If you go onto our social media, our Instagram, our Facebooks, we have the flyer up. The purpose of this Home and Garden Expo is, we started it last year, and it was to help support small business vendors. So a small business in our community could purchase a booth for $50.00, that's it, flat fee, 50 bucks. They'll be able to sell their products to the community that walks through. Yes, last year we had over 100 and some individuals come through. We have everything Home and Garden and beyond, jewelry, house items. We'll have food vendors there as well. So please come out, April 28th. If you come again to our websites or our social media, you'll be able to see the flyer there. So just wanted to share that with everybody. Thanks.
Thank you. All right. Anyone else? Well, anyone else in the audience first? I don't know. Just to be fair, would you like to say something?
Yeah, sure. I'll go one more time.
We're going to give you three minutes. Please state your name.
Trevor Wiznewski, West Bloomfield, Lakewood Court. Yeah, so, you know, with all this discussion, you know, the way the RFP was written, you know, agents and brokers wouldn't have been able to meet the qualifications, because it was for auction services, you know. So I'm assuming you're probably going to have two new RFPs, probably, one for land, one for all these other things coming out. So, you know, I just wanted to let you know that we're still interested in helping you with all your other stuff.
Why don't you guys collate and apply in one RFP together and work together?
I don't know the process and the legality of everything, but I just, I just, you know, the way it's actually written, requiring a Class D license and all these things, there was very strict requirements in there. You know, I'm a Realtor, too. It's just, you wouldn't have checked all the boxes, so, you know, you do need to probably rewrite it, so.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem.
Should we go on Zoom? Yep. Anyone else in the audience? Hearing none? Time's up. I'm going to give you 30 seconds.
Oh, what? Don't start that.
No.
At the mic. At the mic. At the mic. Rules are the rules.
Yeah, and it was a charter change, don't forget. And I believe Councilman Conset was a state rep at the time, so he wasn't on council, was in between his, his council. That, that, it was either 214 or 215, because the local paper almost was non-existent anymore. And that was a big problem, so instead of paying money to the newspapers, they figured, it's, you know, the 20th century, and we're going to- That's what they were talking about. It was not on council.
You know what is free? Your own City Hall social media.
But I'm just saying, that was when it happened. This is not something that just happened. This was quite a while ago. That was, so you might want to look at the charter, and that was a resolution or ordinance that was written up by the, by the attorney at the time, and they changed it.
Madam Clerk, can you look into that for me? Thank you. I just want to get an understanding, why we stopped.
Believe, publish council meeting minutes in the paper. And I think that was a big one. All the ordinance, everything used to, but what was specific, I'll get it to you.
Thank you. And if it wasn't, let's go back to it.
Just change the requirement.
Yeah.
For publishing.
Can I get up again?
I'm going to give you 20 seconds, because I know you're going to yell at me if I didn't.
If, Rachel Lapointe again, if it was a charter change to remove the requirement to publish in the newspaper, that doesn't mean we can't. It just means that we're not required to do it every time, and you guys could absolutely write an ordinance that says that for certain bids or whatever, that they need to be put in a place, maybe, that's not on the internet, like a newspaper or a newsletter, or post it on City Hall doors or something.
I'll have, I'll have Madam Clerk come up with it. Thank you so much, Rachel. All right, next up, we have Jake Woods on Zoom. Please state the name, the, the, man, I'm so hungry and tired. Jake, how you doing?
Good. Good evening, guys. Thank you, council, for the time. I live on Yule Road in Addison Township. I'll show you on a map next time.
Jake, just while you're speaking and driving, please, pulling over.
I'm parked, guys. I promise you.
Okay, good, good.
Yep. So I actually had a Bible study meeting tonight. I stepped out on, I just learned about this meeting tonight, otherwise I would have made arrangements to be there. I was, I worked for HP Snap Investment. We were a former partner under the CAP program with Dearborn Heights when they were looking for tax-foreclosed developers. We've had partnerships with over 10 cities in Metro Detroit, and there's a reason that the councils of all these cities kept using the same contractors, because it's a very specific program. The city has a lot of control over what's done to these houses. Back in this day, we had three in the initial project. We invited the city council, the mayor, on top of your building to- Uh, back in this day, I, we had three in the initial project. We invited the city council, the mayor, uh, on top of your building departments to come in and do a thorough inspection of these. We were held to a certain standard, uh, top-of-the-line standard on developing these houses, bringing them up to code, and then specifically selling them to homeowner occupants through the use of a local Realtor, and, you know, the program had a tremendous amount of success. Like I said, the city had full control over the entire process. There was a lien placed on the property. Um, there's, there's no better program than this, and I know I'm a little biased by it, but there, again, there's a reason all of these cities around you guys continue to use these developers, not just us, but other companies. Um, it's because they, we're under very strict guidelines from what the city designates us. They want done to the property. You're bringing all of these properties up to code, you're not dealing with first-time homebuyers, Mickey Mouse-ing these houses together, uh, and you get a good quality project. And another noteworthy point, there was a Supreme Court case back in Oakland County that they ruled that the city cannot make a profit off of these properties. So I don't know anything about the processes you guys are supposed to be voting on. That's for you guys to research. Uh, but you should definitely look into that Supreme Court case, and I'd be happy to, uh, to send you guys the details as well.
Thank you so much, Jake Woods. Council Chair.
No problem, guys.
All right.
What, what the, that was the, against the Oakland County Treasurer says the city can't keep, or the county can't keep. The county is the foreclosing entity. The county can't keep the windfall. Uh, it doesn't say the city can't keep the profit.
All right, do we have anyone else? Hearing none. Thank you guys for joining today. Ending adjourned.